Good evening. We'd like to start the regular council meeting for May 8, 2023. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand on nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call vote. Dale Macklin?
Yeah.
Jerry Corrian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Here.
Lee Tryhan?
Here.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Approval of minutes from the previous meeting. I have two of them, April 10 and April 24.
So.
I have one correction. The April 24 minutes on the new business number eight, the public hearing, it says the fund balance has been decreasing. This helps with the town's bond. I'm assuming that should say increasing.
Can you make sense to me again just like?
Question raised by Councilor Karen regarding fund balance. Town manager La Croix gave a brief overview. The fund balance has been decreasing. This helps with the town's bond rating and ability to qualify for funds. I'm assuming that should say increasing.
The fund balance has been increasing. The debt service has been decreasing. So I'm not sure if that was.
This just says the fund balance.
Fund balance is increasing.
So I move to make that correction.
Is that you, Ray? Sorry.
Yes, yes. I think it's a show of hands, so.
Show of hands. All in favor? And then, so the approval of April 10 minutes, the roll call, Peter, sorry, Peter, you should be down here. Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Corrian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
And Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Has a seven to zero. And then, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'm motioning to accept the minutes.
April 24th?
Yeah, second.
Discussion.
Okay. Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Corrian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Has a seven to zero. Okay. We have communications, employee recognition.
So in honor of our EMS staff, we just had EMS week. Our administrative assistant for fire and public works did a wonderful job making up this ad that was put in the morning sentinel. But in appreciation for everyone who works in the fire department and the services they provide in EMS, we had this made up as something specifically for the department. And it says Winslow's Everyday Heroes. Special thanks to Scott Bolduc, Wayland Cap, Adam Burgess, Jeff Rennie, Jonathan Berenger, John Stetson, Michael Greenberg, Michael Littlefield, Wyatt Oliver, Eric Chamberlain, William Crawford, Thomas Brown, Michael Murphy, Lisa Carey, Colby Dinsmore, Michelle Grass, Cameron Alcoyne, and Connor Osborne. The town of Winslow would like to thank our extraordinary EMS providers for their unwavering service to our Winslow residents and those in the surrounding communities. Your caring and compassion, compassionate dedication to those you serve is greatly appreciated. Deputy Chief Bolduc, I'm going to give this to you to take to the firehouse, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Presentation by Eric Netto, CPA, regarding the audit. Eric, you should be able to share your screen.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that all right, Erica?
Looks good.
Excuse me, Eric?
Yes?
Can you close those little windows on the side, your face and Eric's?
Yeah.
Please, thank you. Just for the presentation.
I'll try. I can do it now. There we go.
Great, thank you.
You're all set, Eric.
We're all set. I'll start. Thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. My name is Eric Netto. I'm a partner with Nicholson Misho Netto in Waterville. We performed the audit for the town of Winslow for fiscal year '22. We issued our report towards the end of March. And I'm here tonight to do a quick walkthrough, prepare a little PowerPoint presentation to highlight a few of the key areas of business financials and provide a little more context for council in evaluating the fiscal year '22 audit. All right. The first couple slides just are some administrative items around the audit. Responsibility for the financial statements do rest with management. Our responsibility as the auditor for the town is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. We conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States. Those standards do provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, on the fiscal year '22 financial statements for the town. For those of you that have been on the council for a while, who are familiar with governmental financial statements, there are some unique presentation items within the financials. So we do prepare basically two sets of financial statements for the audit. The first is the government-wide financial statements. That's the basically reporting information on a full accrual basis. So we capitalize fixed assets. We report long-term debt. Net pension liability and other various accruals are reported in the government-wide financial statements. There are also, we also report on fund financial statements. These are the financials that you're more accustomed to reviewing and familiar with, you know, general fund, capital improvement, school department, some of your other funds as well. These funds are prepared more on a current financial resources or modified accrual basis. There are some accruals. There are certain items that aren't included in fund financials. It's more of a short-run perspective. A good example here typically would be, as I mentioned, in government-wide, we're reporting long-term debt. In fund financial statements, your debt service is considered an expense. So it shows up that way in your fund financial statements, but it's a reduction of long-term debt in your government-wide. So we also provide in the audited statements a reconciliation of your change in fund balance between the two financials. So this is a quick summary of the financial statement presentation for the town. Now, we're going to start. There's a few slides here that highlight a few key areas for the town. This first slide shows a five-year trend of taxes receivable. Your taxes receivable at the end of fiscal year '22 was about $980,000. That was a significant increase over the prior year, about $290,000. The increase can be tied to a couple of things. One is your mill rate went up, your property tax revenue was up, so we would expect your property tax receivable to be up as well. There were also some cutoff items, some, a couple of large outstanding balances at the end of fiscal year '22. As a percentage of your property tax revenue, your receivable balance was about 6.7%, which, based on a five-year average, is basically right on. So even though this balance is up as a percentage of your property tax revenue over the last five years, that percentage is consistent. Next slide shows your property tax collection rate. Again, don't be too alarmed by the smaller bar here in fiscal year '22. Overall, your collection rate has been very good over the last five years. It's averaged about 95%. You're slightly below that in fiscal year '22. But again, I think that's tied a little bit more to that cutoff at year end. But overall, you're in that 95% range collection rate on your property tax receivables, which is a very good ratio. This next slide shows your five-year property tax rate trend. You had a low in fiscal year '18, your mill rate was 16.74. In fiscal year '22, the year under audit, it was 20.2. And I believe in fiscal year '23, you budgeted for an increase from 20.2 to 21.2. Next slide shows your long-term debt level. In fiscal year '22, you had about a $440,000 decrease overall in your long-term debt. The town did issue new debt, about $1.5 million through the United States Department of Agriculture, and that was to help fund the sewer and stormwater improvement project on Benham. Your new issuance was offset by regularly scheduled principal reductions on your other long-term debt. The big swing from 2018 to 2019, I thought I'd comment on that. That was the year, I believe, there was school bond financing. In that year, I believe it was $7.5 million, $8 million. That was the swing from 2018 to 2019. All right. These next few slides deal a little bit more on the fund balance area for the general fund. The general fund balance at the end of fiscal year '22 was about $5.1 million. That was a decrease from fiscal year '21 of $218,000. But you can see from 2018 through '21, you had a nice steady trend of increasing your general fund balance, which obviously I know is an area that is a focus area for most municipalities because it does impact, as we'll discuss in a little bit, it does impact your budgeting process. I also wanted to present on the school department, which is presented as a separate fund within your financial statements. You'll see some municipalities that combine the school department with the general fund, but the town, I like how it separates that out as a separate column fund within your financial statements. Starting in fiscal year '21, the school department was reporting a positive fund balance. And in fiscal year '22, you can see that that fund balance increased almost $700,000 to approximately $970,000. So within your financial statements, within the town's financial statements, the school department fund balance is reported as a restricted fund balance. But the school department is considering, and I believe you incorporated this, within your fiscal year '23 budget, was utilizing about $300,000 of that school fund balance for use in the budget period. This next slide shows what I'm referring to as your general fund balance liquidity. So some municipalities will adopt a policy which basically requires them to maintain a certain percentage of their general fund balance as a percentage of their general fund expenditures. They track that and they report it into schools in their notes. The town doesn't have that policy. However, I wanted to present over the last five years, what your unassigned general fund balance was, the percentage of your, the general fund expenditures and transfers. And you can see that in fiscal year '22, that percentage was about 23%. That was down a little bit compared to '21, you were at 24.3. This is an interesting ratio because, you know, in this budgeting environment, and we'll see it on the next slide where we talk about budgeted fund, you know, budgeted fund balance usage, it is an important factor when you're preparing budgets, because you are budgeting to utilize some of that fund balance to help control your mill rate. So this percentage here, I think it's a good, it's a good ratio. I think the city, the town's ratio of 23% down a little bit, that was because of the decrease in your fund balance, but you had a nice increase from fiscal year '20. So again, that's basically you providing the city, the town with additional unassigned fund balance that potentially you can use for your budgeting process. Fund balance utilization. So for the past three years, I wanted to show that the town has budgeted. So this blue, this blue column is the budgeted fund balance usage, and the red would represent what was actually used. So in fiscal year '20, the town budgeted to use approximately $914,000. None was used. You actually added to your fund balance of about $506,000 in fiscal year '20. So that's a good, a good relationship. You budgeted to use some of your fund balance. You actually didn't use any of it. You added to your fund balance. Same with fiscal year '21. You budgeted to use a little over $1 million. None was used. You actually added $989,000 to your fund balance in fiscal year '21. In fiscal year '22, you budgeted to use about $280,000. You did utilize some of that. You used about, I think it was around $195,000. Again, as we disclosed earlier, we discussed earlier, you had a slight decrease in your general fund balance. You utilized some of that fund balance in fiscal year '22. So I think the takeaway here is that over the last three years, you budgeted to utilize fund balance. In no year did you exceed that. And in two of those years, you didn't use any of it. All right, just a few other matters that I want to communicate to the council. I want to thank Erica and Tanya and Paula from the school department. They did a great job working with us, first-year audit with us. They were prepared. Questions were answered timely. The timing on the audit was not on the town. We communicated with them throughout the process. We had a little, some turnover in our firm, caused some delays. But Erica and her team did a great job, and I appreciate the help that they provided during the engagement. There were no disagreements during the audit between us or management about any financial accounting reporting or auditing matters. We do discuss a variety of things throughout the audit, those I feel were within the normal course of the engagement. Again, very responsive to our requests. I also want to acknowledge Hank Farah, who the town engaged as a consultant in fiscal year '22 to provide some year-end close and financial reporting expertise. Hank did a good job working with us, provided good information that we were able to use during our audit process. And he addressed, actually, a recommendation that was, that had been made to the town for a number of years under their previous auditor around financial reporting and financial statement preparation. We do, we have provided some additional recommendations. We do, we have provided some additional recommendations to management in a management letter, nothing that we would consider to be significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. They're more recommendations to help improve the current internal control structure and some operating efficiency in a few areas. I think overall, the control structure at the town and the school department are well-designed, and they're functioning as intended. We do issue, we do perform and issue a separate audit for the school department. Again, as I mentioned, Paula does a good job, and Peter's involved throughout the control structure as well. So I want to thank the school for their help during the audit. We do issue a separate report, and that's available upon request. We also performed an audit of the town and schools' combined federal expenditures. It's called a single audit. The town is required to have one annually, because their expended, their federal expenditures exceed $750,000. So we audited two programs, both within, managed within the school department, the education stabilization funding and the child nutrition cluster. So a single audit requires us to evaluate compliance requirements that we deem to be direct and material to those programs. We test controls in those programs over eligibility, cash management, reporting. We test payroll dispersments, cash dispersments. Do quite a bit of work there. And I'm happy to report that there were no findings within the single audit. Everything, everything went well in those two, those two programs. They're not new programs to the school department, so they're very familiar with the compliance requirements. So just wanted to report quickly to the council that we did issue a separate report, again, for the single audit, clean opinion, no issues there. And again, as I mentioned, we did issue a separate management letter with some recommendations to the town on a few internal control areas that, again, are not significant or material issues, more recommendations for improvement. That's a quick 10-minute presentation. I know the financial statements are, you know, 60 pages long for the town. There's a lot of information in there. Again, I think the town overall is in a good financial position. All municipalities are struggling these days with, with budgeting and the price of items increasing. So I think overall, when you look at your budget actual, particularly over the last three years, during a very difficult operating environment, I think the town has done a very big job controlling costs, you know, managing their revenue sources, reviewing and obtaining additional grant funding.
Does anyone have any questions for Erica about the audit?
I'm going to stop my sharing here. That concludes my presentation. Anybody has any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address those.
I do have a question, because it's going to, I need someone to be able to explain it cleanly, and I'm not sure if I'm the one who can. So when you talk about budgeted use of fund balance in FY '22, that we budgeted 250,000. On the town side, we didn't. That's part of the reason we had the big mill increase, was because we didn't budget using any of our fund balance. So where is the split between, when we're looking at the overall general fund books here, the audit report, where is it that the school is included and is not included?
Erica, is there, is there a way to adjust the volume on your end? Because I'm having trouble hearing you guys.
I don't know that I can. Yeah. I'm just going to have to try to speak louder, unfortunately. So when you talk about the 250,000 that was budgeted for use of fund balance, is, because on our end, on the town side, we did not budget any use. So I just want to try and separate, or at least be able to explain, where the school is combined in our financial statements and where the school is not combined in our financial
I'm not getting the question. I'm just having trouble hearing. So what I would suggest, Erica, is why don't we follow up with an email? And I'll respond that way. And I'll address your question, no problem. I'm just, I'm having trouble hearing the, the acoustics are a little difficult.
Okay, good enough.
Okay.
Any other question?
I don't have any. I'm assuming that 250 was used by the school budget.
It wasn't ours, so it has to be.
Actually, if you go to page 10, I think your answer's right there.
Right, but we didn't budget for it. So that's where my question comes in, so.
Okay. Erica, I can, I can hear you now. I don't know if somebody changed something or anything, but I can hear you. Let it clear it out. So why don't, why don't we try this one more time here?
Okay, so the 250,000 that was budgeted for use of fund balance in FY '22, was that budgeted on the town side or was that budgeted on the school side? And the reason I ask is, overall, it's our, it's our overall financial statement, and that's absolutely fine, but I need to be able to explain, because we did not budget on our side for any use of fund balance in FY '22 on the municipal side. So that's going to cause some confusion as people are looking at this. You know, you told us you weren't using any fund balance, but here we're reporting that you budgeted the use of 250,000, even though we didn't use it all.
Yeah, so what, where we, where we obtained that information, on page 19 and 20 of your audit, is where we present the budget for the general fund and also the budget to actual for the school department. So the final budget that was approved for fiscal year 22 is report, for the general fund, is reported on page 19. So originally, the, the general fund, if you look at how it's reported, you have use of fund balance of 615 on the final adjusted budget. But you didn't, you didn't use all of that. Okay, because typically what we do here, when you're evaluating what you budgeted for fund balance and what you actually used, that final budget should really be a net zero at the bottom. Okay, so originally, the town did not budget to use fund balance. On the final adjusted budget, there was 615 budgeted, but you didn't use all of that. So basically, what, what you would do, what you would need to do to zero that out, the use of fund balance was about 280. So that's what I was discussing earlier, but you technically only utilized 195 of that in your actual results for fiscal year 22. Okay, so original budget was no use of fund balance. Final budget, you did budget to utilize some of that.
Okay, those were our transfers, and when we had to make those additional purchases, correct? We had some council orders to appropriate some funds. That, okay.
Yep.
Understood.
Okay, and then on the school, on page 20, you can see that they budgeted to use 160. And they didn't use any of their budgeted fund balance in fiscal year 22. They actually added, you know, a fairly significant amount to their fund balance, which now you're going to, now you utilize some of that in fiscal year 23.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, use of fund balance, it is interesting in a financial reporting setting, because it's not revenue that we're going to run through the financial statements again, right? It's accumulated fund balance over, over the years. And you utilize some of that, but you're not going to recognize it as additional revenue, right? So it's more of a balancing item on your budget. So it can be a little confusing when you're looking at that, but from our perspective, I think the, again, the takeaway here is that when we're talking with councils is looking at what, what have you budgeted to use and what did you actually use? The last three years for the town have been in a, in a positive situation, meaning you budgeted to use some, but you didn't use all of it. I think that's the takeaway.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Hey, Eric, I really appreciate you taking the time to sit down with us and explain everything, and appreciate all the work you put in this year. I know you had some struggles with your own staffing issues over there and the amount of work you had on your plate, so I appreciate you getting this all done for us.
You're very welcome. And I think, you know, as we, as we embark here, kind of looking forward, Erica and I have had some communication around us continuing on as, as the auditor for the town, and as of right now, we're, we're not going to, but we're going to continue that conversation, and, you know, we'll kind of see where things go.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, Jacob. Jacob Laverne has a presentation on urban development and infrastructure.
You can connect wirelessly. It might bounce me out.
Just the lettering?
If you connect to a wireless display, that TV should allow you to connect. It's a Samsung, something over there. Is it resident on your computer, or do you have it on a thumb drive?
I have it on Google Drive. I can just email it to you.
If you could do that, I can display it. Is it possible to maybe start when it comes through? It's not coming through right now.
You're a better man for it already.
I can get it up once it comes through.
Okay, we can move on?
We can come back. Okay. Jacob, we'll just come back when you got it figured out.
Okay, for boards and committee appointments, we do have Jacob Laverne as for safety committee.
Second discussion.
No discussion?
There being none.
Dale Mackler?
Yes.
Jerry Grayan?
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Bravo?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryham?
Yes.
And Peter Drabbel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Onto reports of committees and commissions, the town manager's report.
Hello, council members, members of the public. It's been a kind of crazy end to the month of April. We got those April showers, maybe a little bit more than we wanted. Do want to say it's very fortunate that we, we ended up a lot better off than a lot of our neighbors in, kind of back in Somerset County. We do have quite a bit of debris down at the park at Fort Halifax. It's going to take a while to be able to get in there and clean that up, but we, we will be on it. We are applying for funding. We have to have those reports in by noon on Wednesday for cleanup, but even if we get the funding, it's going to be a bit before we can get in there. The ground is very soft, and we don't want to do more damage than's already been done by the debris by bringing heavy equipment in. So just know that we, we are on it, and we're seeking funding to, to help alleviate the costs of getting that done. As you know, we've already held the first budget hearing for the FY 2024 budget, and as we just heard from Eric Nedu, we are in pretty good financial shape, and the goal is to keep us that way. We are using some fund balance, but we're using it ahead of time in FY '23. So although it doesn't show in your FY '24 budget, your FY '23 budget, we are pre-funding some of our capital through the use of fund balance, because we do have a healthier fund balance than we had in prior years. So we are offsetting a bit through that. I would like to thank all of my department heads and also Sherry Fisher for the work that they put into doing the presentations this year. It's the first time we've done it. I think it was very informative. It was very helpful for, I think, people who don't necessarily know what goes into our budget, to kind of get a big-picture look at, these are the things that we're spending, this is why your budget's going up, and, and what we hope to get out of it and accomplish with the money that we're collecting this year. So I, I think they did a great job, and especially, I have to say to Sherry, she even did the police budget, and that one wasn't really her. She's the administrative assistant for fire and public works, and she jumped in and helped with the police one, too. So thanks to her in particular. Just to cover the high points, projects, Chaffey Brook pump station river crossing bid did come in. It's on the agenda tonight for approval. Unfortunately, it was not really good news. It came in almost a million higher than what we had anticipated and what the engineer was telling us to expect. Unfortunately, it's one of those things where there's not many contractors out there who do it. And the second highest bid was considerably higher than the first highest, which was a lot higher than what we thought we were going to get. So that's unfortunate. It is going to mean that we probably need to borrow more money to complete this project, and the earmark funding that we had thought was going to cover the entire river crossing is no longer going to cover the river crossing. So that's not good news. We did apply for more congressionally directed spending or earmarks this year around, and the good news is that both Senator King and Senator Collins have moved our request of $3 million for the Sunset Heights sewer project forward. That doesn't mean we're going to get it, and obviously, with all the news we've had about the, the debt ceiling and the infighting among the parties as to what agreement seemed to happen to increase that debt ceiling, this year's round of funding may never even come to fruition, but hopefully it does, and the first step is getting our senators on board, and they have. So thank you very much to both of them for moving our project forward. Obviously, the Tyconic Bridge started in April. So far, things have been going pretty smoothly. I have to commend Chimbro, the contractor, and M.D.O.S., that so far, we really haven't had a whole lot of tie-ups or inconvenience to the traveling public. It's been going well. Communication has been good, and a couple little... Communication has been good and a couple little issues we've brought up have been addressed. You can look for the full closures on that bridge to start in September, so more pain will be coming, but so far, so good. We are keeping all of the updates on the website. When you log into our website, there's a pop-up on the very front page that has the latest information for the week on what the planned lane closures are. We also have been putting those out on Facebook, so we're trying to keep everybody up to speed on what's going on and which lanes to expect to be closed every week. The environmental project on the, the environmental study on the junior high building is finally having some on what we can anticipate for an actual teardown cost, what it's going to entail to mitigate any contamination there within the next few weeks. So that's good news because for a long time, we weren't having any action on it at all. We do know that we're going to have to take action sooner rather than later, at least from the standpoint of determining that we're going to shut the building down completely. There is a major roof leak that is not worth the amount of money it would take to repair, and we still have the electricity on to that building because that's what's running the security system. Water, electricity, that means pretty big fire hazard, so we are probably going to be shutting the thing down completely and boarding it up. That's also a safety issue for just kids that get in there, vagrants, anybody that goes in that building could not anticipate necessarily being safe, and even though people aren't supposed to be in there, we all know that every now and then people get in there that aren't supposed to be there and we don't want any harm to come to them either. The security system also needs work if we were to keep it up and running, and that's probably not worth sinking the money into at this point when we know we're not going to be doing anything with that building. So hopefully, we'll have an answer on getting that torn down pretty soon. Property maintenance ordinance, I just want to touch on that real quick because we started that in April. We have gotten a lot more activity than I personally had anticipated we would get on it. I thought most of our complaints would be the properties near the downtown or quasi-downtown area, Bay Street, China, Halifax, Benton. Surprisingly, we are getting a lot of reports from the outer edges, the rural areas of town. Jim has been extremely busy. He's got more complaints than he can answer quickly, so if you have filed a complaint and it hasn't been answered yet, please understand that we do have to triage what comes into code enforcement, and we need to make sure that we first address building permits and inspections and then take on the property maintenance complaints. I would like to point out that we have gotten quite a bit of compliance so far, the best news of which would be the Irving Station down on Bay Street that has been such an eyesore for years. They have put out a bid to have the canopy taken down, which should happen sometime this summer, but in the meantime, they are keeping it mowed. So at least it is presentable at this point, if not the most beautiful thing we could have on Bay Street, and it's at least being taken care of until they can get it completely taken down. So that's really good news. Thanks, Jim, for all the work you've done on this. I mean, it's, it hasn't been fun. It's a thankless job, but I think the ordinance is doing what we intended it to do. I also want to say thank you to Katie Filbrick. Katie's not with us tonight, unfortunately. She is ill, but she has been stepping in as the interim codes and assessing assistant, which means that she's been dealing a lot with the public safety aspects of this ordinance as well. And between her and Jim, they've really been putting their heads together and figuring out how we can make process, progress for both codes and the planning boards, so good job to both of them. In closing, I want to say a congratulations to our neighboring town manager, Ella Bowman in Oakland. For those of you who do not know, she was named the municipal employee of the year by the Mid-Maine Chamber of Commerce. The award ceremony was on April 27 at Enchanted Gables, and I did attend. The amount of things that she has been able to do in the seven years that she's been in that job has been amazing, and I think that Oakland is truly fortunate to have her at the helm. I hope I can follow in her footsteps and do the same for Winslow. That's all I've got for you.
Any other department?
Can I head through the chair just a minute? Would it do, and Paul too, would it do, would there be any benefit to expand the search for the Chaffey Brook bid?
Not really.
Not really?
It's a specialty type of operation. As I said, we're going to add two bids on it with all more contractors. There's too much work out there and not enough contractors. They know it. They're not going to work cheap. And it's not what we're expecting, but we don't have a lot of choice. If we go out to bid now, we may not get any bids.
So the million dollars over, obviously, anticipated million dollars is huge. I've just asked a question.
No, it is, and if we delay too much, then we'll miss a November window. We don't get to the river in November of this year and we're waiting for November of next year, and that's only window, we did more than the river, so every time we delay, the price is going to go up some more.
Thank you.
That kind of got us in the wrong place. It's not good news and not anything that any of you or myself or Paul wanted to hear. The only good news I can give on that is that at least we do have the earmark funding sitting there, which, you know, at least takes a little bit of the burden off the town, and the fact that it will go into debt service means that the impact won't be felt all at once, but it is going to increase our debt load going down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other department heads want to, Peter, do you want to take a minute?
Just quickly, I think it's important to talk a little bit about this. I'll be doing a presentation to the board at our next meeting, and it's just about school safety. School safety is on the minds of everyone. Every time you open up the newspaper or turn on the TV, you hear another tragedy. In Winslow, we've been working the entirety of the year on updating our safety plans. We've included in those conversations members of the fire department, members of the police department, our chief, and as a result of that work, we have applied for a COPS grant, which is a federal grant. That grant is from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Police Services, and the amount that we've applied for $77,000. We're applying for security equipment for the campus, cameras at the elementary school. We have cameras at the elementary school, but it's a large building. We want to increase the amount of cameras that we have in there. We want to install a keyless entry system at the elementary school, similar to what we have at the junior high school and the high school, and walkie-talkies. And I know that sounds silly, but walkie-talkies don't always talk to one another, and if you're inside of a building, you need a certain type of walkie-talkie. If you need to connect to a bus, you need a certain channel, another type of walkie-talkie, and they're very expensive. So we've put in for walkie-talkies as well. We needed to have a letter of support from our local police to say that they were on board with our efforts and to continue working with us, and Chief has given us that letter, that go-ahead. We won't know if we've received this grant until September, but we're in hopes that what we've put together is going to be competitive. In other news, a lot of activities happening this time of year. I suggest that you look at our website, see what's going on in terms of drama, in terms of events, sporting events. COVID did bring, did start one event, which is called the Senior Car Parade, and we've kept that, and it's quite a popular event, which will take place on Sunday, June 4 at 1:00. And graduation, of course, is June 7 at 6:00 p.m. at Colby College. And one last thing, we are two meetings away from having our official addition completed at the elementary school. We are on time, we're on schedule, we're within budget, so that has all gone exceptionally well, and we're very pleased about that project. That's it.
Thank you.
Good question to the chair. Peter, is there scheduled a parade like usual for graduation?
The car parade is, the senior car parade is June 4 at 1:00.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any other department heads want to speak? Okay. Jacob, are you ready to go?
I'm going to finish this business first.
I sent the email there, my computer doesn't have Wi-Fi.
Yes, I've got it. I've got three emails.
Make a motion, make separate parts.
Second.
Okay, Dale Mackler?
Yes.
Jerry Crieren?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryon?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
I may need to try and hear because it's got my speech recorded on, so I can do the signs, is that okay?
You're fine, as long as we can hear you. Just let me know when to flip.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacob Levarnaway, District 2, and tonight I'm here as an advocate for Strong Towns, a nonprofit, nonpartisan advocacy organization that aims to build livable, safe, and solvent towns starting from the ground up. Today's topic is about finance and parking. More specifically, it is about doing the math of how our land use policy damages the town's ability to fund itself. Next slide. To start with, I want to explain why this is an important topic, why the council and the public at large should care. Firstly, and as you all know, these recent infrastructure projects are incredibly expensive. In order for these necessary projects to get built, the town must have a tax base strong enough in order to pay for them. That means either increasing property taxes or building more properties to tax. Secondly, land is a limited resource. We only have so much of it within our borders. Property tax on developed land is, of course, the town's biggest income source. Therefore, we must use our limited land supply efficiently in order to keep the town through black, in the black through thick and thin. Next. So then the question becomes, how do we make sure of that? How do we measure good fiscal land usage? How do we determine if something that we build is a good financial deal for the town? Next. The raw tax revenue? No. That would be like trying to measure miles per tank. Of course, a big business is going to get more in revenue, but that doesn't mean it is an efficient usage of land. A semi-truck with 150-gallon tank and diesel may drive further, but it's never going to beat me and my Prius in terms of efficiency. Auto traffic? No. Lots of cars moving through an area is not a guaranteed indicator that they're moving to an area to do business. They are, in all likelihood, just taking the fastest route to somewhere else. Also, not all people who live and work anyplace will be getting there by driving. So then how should we measure it? The answer is simple. To pay for things around town, we must get as much value from our land as we can. That means measuring tax income by tax revenue per acre. So let's go ahead and, so let's go ahead and measure the fiscal productivity of some lots in Winslow to demonstrate the point. All three of these lots are situated upon Bay Street. They see the same levels of traffic and are serviced by the same amount of infrastructure. First is 53 Bay Street, a mixed-use commercial building. On the ground floor is the Asian Cafe with a tax assessor's office above. It is a small lot, only enough for the building and an alley for trash collection. While many people park in the lot to the left of it, that parking, legally speaking, is a separate lot entirely. This next is 50 Bay Street. This lot is occupied by a single Dunkin' Donuts. By and far, the majority of this parcel is utilized for parking and a drive-through. It looks shiny and new, and it brings in 15,000 in tax income per year. Sounds great, right? Lastly, we have 46 Bay Street. On this lot sits a single strip mall with rooms for six small businesses. It has no mixed usage. It was built in 1985, smack in the middle of suburbanization. As such, it, just like Dunkin', has a massive, mostly empty parking lot. Now that we've seen these three lots, it's time to do some math. You simply divide the lot's value and tax revenue by the size of the parcel. And this is the result. The massive difference in true value should be immediately obvious. The clean, shiny, brand-new Dunkin' Donuts is currently as valuable as it will ever be. Despite that, next slide. Despite that, it has half the value per acre of the Asian Cafe. It will never be worth more than this building from the 1940s that has long since peaked. The same goes for the Bay Street strip mall. Neither of them can even come close to outcompeting the Cafe in terms of property tax, and it all goes downhill from here. As time goes on, this gap in tax revenue per acre will only widen as these newer constructions depreciate in value. So what can we do? What is one of the, what is responsible for this issue? Well, one of the primary causes for this problem lies within the town's zoning code. It's the, it's the parking requirements that we have all throughout town. These minimums are, this, they require that massive amounts of parking be installed in places where it may not truly be necessary. The council should eliminate these minimums. That would enable developers and business owners to determine how much parking they actually need in order to do business, rather than following swedo-scientific and arbitrary minimums. If the businesses can determine how much parking they actually need or want, they can build as much or as little as is truly necessary to do business. Any excess can then be redeveloped into something else, such as affordable housing. Next. Sorry. These minimums result in massive dead space, like this parking lot around Ken's Food Truck. These parking spaces that go unused could be turned into extra seating or a new kitchen to make Ken money. Perhaps he could sell his unused parking to a developer who replaces it, or maybe he could move into the old movie gallery just up the street with its greater floor space. Problem is, Ken, and therefore the town, cannot make more money to pay off our debts if parking minimums force businesses to work in small lots under, or around, or surrounded by seas of asphalt. Now, I'm sure many in the council and the audience are thinking to themselves, if we don't mandate parking, where will people park? Will removing mandates make life difficult for those with disabilities? Will getting rid of parking minimums even help or work in a small town like Winslow? Well, firstly, getting rid of parking mandates doesn't mean getting rid of parking. It just means that businesses and developers would not be required to build more if they do not need more. Right now, we are sitting on a glut of excess underutilized space. There's parking lot around St. John's Cathedral, the old movie gallery, the lobster trap, the strip mall, and so on. What about those with disabilities? Don't they need accessible parking spaces? Will repealing parking minimums remove those spaces? No. This ordinance does not involve accessible parking in any way. To be clear, accessible park, next slide. To be clear, accessible parking is necessary. However, our parking mandates cause the construction of parking that is not accessible. That doesn't help. Repealing these mandates would allow for the removal of our glut of non-accessible spaces. Lastly, the ADA already covers accessible parking. Right now, it requires only 2% to 4% of these spaces to be accessible. 96% to 98% of parking is not. If we really do need more accessible spaces, then we can simply write a town ordinance to up the ratio that the ADA has already provided us. Thirdly, would our appeal even work in our small town? Yes. Yes, it would. Removal of parking mandates has recently reached critical mass. Parking Reform Network is an organization dedicated to tracking their changes. According to their data, over 100 municipalities within the 5,000 to 10,000 population range, just like Winslow, have already made these kinds of reforms. So to summarize, whenever the town council is considering public or private development, value per acre is the one, is one of the most important statistics in determining if the town can remain solvent. But when the town mandates the construction of parking, the inevitable result is incredible damage to the city's finances. They make it more difficult for entrepreneurs and smaller businesses to move in by forcing them to purchase larger lots. They reinforce urban sprawl and cause encroachment upon rural areas. For those that desire to live in rural lifestyles in the wilderness, the wireless, the wilderness must remain untouched by urban sprawl. If the town council wants a quaint, walkable, small town, it must start by legalizing the construction of one. It must start by repealing parking minimums. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Is there any public comment? I had nothing.
I received none through email.
We have no tabled business. Onto old business. Order number 60-2023, providing for the authorization for the town manager to sign the amended agreement between the town of Winslow and the main public agreement between the town of Winslow and the main public employees retirement system effective July 1, 2023.
So moved.
Discussion.
Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Order number 17-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to contract with Hank Farah Consulting for an amount not to exceed $14,000 for pre-audit services for the fiscal year 2023, year-end audit.
So moved.
Any discussion? Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Order number 19-2023, providing for approval of the town of Winslow, 2023, 2024 fiscal budget series, and the amount of $31,36,731, and to establish a due, tax due date and interest rate on taxes remaining unpaid.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Just very quickly. I would just like to thank the school department, all the department heads, police chief, fire chief, all the assessing. Erica, I'd like to give you a thanks too for all the work, and I'd like to thank my fellow counselors for all the time and effort we put into doing the budget, and, and thank you very much for all the work.
I would like to place a memo to this budget of $150,000 less than $31 million.
Any second?
Peter, you're going to say that there's no second. You're going to announce that there's no second.
There's no second.
Okay. So roll call vote on the motion to approve the budget? Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Joseph? Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. And now on to new business. Order number 20-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to renew the information technology services agreement with the city of Waterville for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. There being none.
Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Order number 21-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to sign a contract with, with Eastwood Contractors for the storm drain and sewer replacement project on the Cushman Road with the amounts not to exceed $2,600,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Just to the chair again, Peter, how many did, how many, Paul, did bids did we get for this particular?
We had three bids on this one, and this one was $1,600 lower than the next bid, on a $2,000,000-something thousand dollars, something I've never seen, so. So it's
That's pretty close.
Very, very, very close.
Paul?
Yes.
Were you able to come up with any more information on Eastwood?
Not a whole lot. I mean, our engineers, DeRago has worked with them.
They have worked with them?
They have worked them. I don't know of a project this size, but haven't really heard anything bad about them. I mean, they're bonded, they're insured, so, and we'll have a full-time inspector on the job for DeRago, so should be able to keep a pretty close tabs on them.
That's all I got.
Roll call vote. Any other questions? Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Can we request a wave of the second reading on this one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading passes seven to zero.
I'll stay for the next one.
Now's the state.
That's plenty on that.
Okay. Order number 22-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to sign a contract with Wyman and Simpson for Phase One of the Chaffee Brook Pump Station upgrades, specifically the new forest main across the Kennebec River with the amount not to exceed $2,400,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. So this is the figure that went up over-anticipated to the $200 million?
Yeah, the last, the last figure I had from the engineers when we did the bid opening, they were thinking more 1.4, 1.5, so not a million, but a substantial amount. But like I said, this is specialty work. There are not a whole lot of contractors that do river work. I think there's a lot of work out there, so, and in the gist of things, this is not a really big job for some of these guys, so competition is somewhat fierce. They, they have all kinds of work, so.
Oh yeah. It's out of my control.
And I do know at least that this contractor owns all their own equipment. They own their own barges. They, they do most of their work themselves, as opposed to the other bidder would have hired out a lot of the stuff. So, the, our engineers did some homework, and they came back with a recommendation to hire them, so. I mean, Wyman Simpson's a big company, been out there for years. You see them out there, you know, doing a lot of bridge work, but they do this work as well, so. It's just, it's kind of shocking when you expect one price and they're way, way over, but.
I don't think it's the last shock we're going to encounter when it comes to some of these projects.
No, because a lot, what's happening with a lot of these projects too, because of the money coming back, everything is buy American, build American, so we're going to see that when we come to the pump station projects, that the pumps that we wanted that we can't buy because they're partially made overseas and, you know, they forced your hand. It's, it's great, it's great to encourage, you know, American business, but on the other hand, we're on the other end paying for it, so eliminate this competition.
Well, sort of mildly, is for years I've worked with Wyman Simpson, through DLT. They're a real good contractor. They do a good job. It doesn't mean that they'll not make some mistakes, but what they bid, they're not going to lose money.
They are also using local contractors. I know Rangers is going to be doing most of their earthwork, so they are hiring local and keep some of them in our area, so. Best we can ask for.
Okay. Any other discussion? Lee, go ahead.
Question through the chair, Paul. This is slated to, the job to be done sometime around November, correct?
They should be starting November. That's the first window that opens the work in the river.
Okay, so we don't need to expedite the?
I'm guessing that they're probably going to try to hit the ground sooner than that to get as much work done prior to it, because November is not exactly the nicest weather to be working. So I'm guessing they're probably going to come in, try to fuse some of their pipe and, you know, get as much stuff done before the weather, so they can hit the ground running, get in, get out.
So do you feel we need to waive the second reading?
I would if we could, just to get them going, because I'm sure they've got material costs like everybody else, and I don't know how, some of this pipe is, there's some pipe that's months and months out to get.
And make a motion, waive the second reading?
They're going to get through the first one first.
Oh, yeah.
Just saying.
I'm not the only one that's cruising.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll get to the first one then?
Yeah.
Let's do the first one.
Okay. Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Kira, you're up. When we make the second reading, we waive the second reading on 23, 2023.
Was it Lee or Jeff?
Jeff.
Discussion.
Thank you.
No discussion.
Okay. Dale Mactlin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
No. Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
About motion to waive second reading passes seven to zero. Okay. Got my piles here. Order number 23-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to sign a contract with Jamie Ward, Doing Business as Mainly Paving Services LLC, for a three-year paving contract.
So moved.
Oh, we've got a second, a second.
Second.
And we don't vote on anything this week, this week, today.
Discussion.
None?
Yes. The bid, Paul, was how much?
Wait, hold on a second. Was this bid or was this request for proposals?
It was a bid for this year. We gave them the streets that we were planning on paving for this year. That's where the numbers come back. I use the estimated quantities that we're going to be putting down this year versus their unit prices to reflect the difference in the three contractors. About $40,000 difference between the low bid and the second bid, which was Pike.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Is, are these figures for a three-year contract or?
These are for the first year.
So this isn't a three-year contract?
It's a three-year contract with escalators built in for the next two years, but they, what they're giving us is their price per quantity, so it's a unit price and then an escalator coming in on the next end. So yes, the prices will change year to year because we're doing different amounts of paving. And we may be doing overlays versus dig up and rebuild, but the quantity price, the unit pricing is what they bid on.
I didn't figure out the full three years. I would have to go back and look at all the other roads we're going to do in the next year and the year after and come up with all the tonnage, but for this year, we're looking about 6,000 tons.
So whoever gets, whoever this contract gets awarded to is going to have a three-year contract with the town, with, with escalators?
The only escalator, I believe, is in the asphalt.
Yeah.
And that, if you're familiar with asphalt, that goes up and down. So they're holding these prices for three years.
Did everybody bid on that same?
Yes.
pretense?
Yes.
Okay.
I only figured out the quantities for this year's paving, just to give you guys an idea of what the numbers would come up to, the difference in, because I'm sure most of you, if you see 50 cents a ton difference, unless you have a tonnage, it's hard to grasp the difference in price from one contractor to the other.
Was, was it put in the bid procedure that there are to be quality control labs involved, quality control people on the job, and equipment sizing, and company-owned equipment throughout?
As far as I know, everything he has, he owns.
Who?
As far as mainly paving.
Yeah, he doesn't own reclaiming up there?
No, he hires up, but either, either does Allstate. Allstate hires out their reclaiming as well, so.
To the chair, if I may. All I know is, I know that we have done primarily our business of Pike Industries in the past. I know we've been very satisfied with them in the past. I don't know the other contractor. I'm sure they're comparable, they might be able to, but we know a known entity in Pike Industries.
Oh, absolutely, and I would, I would love to continue working with Pike, but.
They did, Pike did the, the Brinton Avenue project, is that correct?
They did the second part of Brinton Avenue. The first part was B&amp;B paving out of Herman.
Okay, so they came in and did the final coat, is that in the?
So the first section that we did from Roger Crowe out to the town line was B&amp;B paving back. They did all the reclaiming, all their own grading and paving and.
I have nothing against any of the other three companies. I'll just know that in the past, we have had Pike, and we've been extremely satisfied with the engineering and the, and the expertise that Pike gives us.
Absolutely, and I, and I enjoy working with them. I mean, I know they're going to show up here with everything they have, they need. I don't have to chase flaggers, I don't have to sweep or anything, but.
I know there are times in the past where we haven't taken the lowest bid, and we've taken the bid, not because the other companies, we didn't, didn't know, but we know the entity that we have, so.
The, if I could, to the chair. So Paul and I went into this hoping that we were going to get Pike for exactly the reasons that Ray has mentioned. The problem is, is this is an invitation for bid, and although you may have gone outside of low bidder in the past, if you did it as an RFP, you can, you can do that because, but it has to be based on some other criteria. In the case of this contractor, he is an unknown, although when we sat down with Pike afterwards to discuss the remaining paving they had for us this year, the gentleman who owns Mainly Paving did come from Pike. They had nothing bad to say about him. As a matter of fact, they said he was honest. They were a little bit skeptical that he might not have an overrun, but we also have the right to cancel the contract at any time. The big question at this point would be now, will, would Pike even be able to help us this year? Because they have moved on, they've got plenty of work, so I'm not sure that you're going to be able to do that, and my big question is legality. You have nothing to, you have nothing to deny the contract on. You've got low bid, no bad, at least that we could find. I know one of you has told me you've got bad reviews, but I need to see those. We need to be able to produce those.
Red light on 201. Go grab the turning lane on 201.
500 feet.
And we mentioned that one as well when we were talking to Pike, and the reason that was given was because he was working completely by himself. It was a rush job. He did not have a crew.
And we're going to hire this guy, we're going to give this guy $800,000? Not my vote, you know. If Allstate won this bid, there would be no complaining, none whatsoever. But in this case, there's, there's too many unknowns. And Erica, yeah, okay, he starts paving Winslow in October, and we'd find after the first road or two, this, this is unacceptable. Now what's, now what shall happen? Now we can do nothing, right, Paul, till the following year?
Pretty much.
Okay.
But we haven't found anything. He, he did Fairfield last year. Fairfield was very happy with his work. That's the only information I can give you.
How many times has the town gone through this? I wasn't on the council, but how many times has the town hired driveway painters to do roads? And that's just what we've ended up with. And I'm not saying Jamie's a driveway painter. All I'm saying is, we have had an excellent rapport with Pike.
We have.
They have, they have all their own in-house QC labs, QC people, grinders, grading crew. It's endless, so.
I, I have nothing against any of the three contractors. I, I'm sure
I don't either.
They do good work. All I can say is, in the past, when we've had Pike, we've had A to Z, we have not had any issues whatsoever, none, zero. And we have not always gone to Z, we have not had any issues whatsoever, none, zero, and we have not always gone with the lowest or the highest bid, or the, we sometime.
Since I've been here.
Factor in, factor in, not that these companies, not that each one of the companies is incompetent, but we're spending a lot of the time, we want the job, not that they can't do it, but we want insurance that the job is done correctly, and sometimes we pay more money to ensure that that's done because of the experience that we've had with the company that we dealt here.
Well, we've always taken a low bid.
In accounting, we, we just spent, I mean, not that this, we spent money for, for Hank in accounting, so you could come in and do a pre-audit, so that, you know, that was, that was, sometimes we spend money to ensure that we get what we want, and that things run smoothly as we can.
We've always taken a low bid since I've been here.
It's not legal not to own an invitation for bid, is the problem.
Oh, it's not legal?
No.
We've had some that weren't as good.
That's why I'm saying, you have to have something that we can come back and say that we're denying the contract for, we do have the right to refuse the low bid, but we have to have a reason.
There are, there are plenty of reasons to back that up, in my opinion, and when it comes down to that, and the reasons have to be stated, the biggest reason that these people are gonna look for on why we didn't take the low bid is experience, and the town's experience in the past, and Paul, yes, lowest bid every year, we've had problems in some years, not all, but some.
All the problems we've had haven't been with the payers, they've been with the general contractor that did the job.
We've gone with Pike for three years now, or four?
I think this is the third year we just.
Third year, no troubles whatsoever, we've had an excellent relationship with Pike.
Oh, we have, I, I'm not.
Those factors right there are going to count, as much as any other factor, in making this legal.
Unless mainly paving comes back on us.
Unless who?
Unless mainly paving comes back on us.
Let them come back on us, and we'll take them, and, and we'll explain this, and any, any decision-maker is gonna consider the experience this town has with any contractor, for that matter, and if that includes paying a little higher price this time around to get what we've continued to have in the last three years, then I think it's well worth it to go with the Pike bid, and make sure we once again are gonna get our roads done and do it, we've put a lot of money into these roads in the last three or four years, let's not stop that now and go with somebody, I'm not saying anybody else would do a terrible job, with Pike, we know what we're getting, we know we're gonna get a top-notch job, and the roads are gonna be done, no road, that's a complete reclaim, Shory Road's a complete reclaim, those are tough jobs, those aren't easy jobs for anybody, we've had Pike's experience with reclaim, and they've done a good job by all accounts, so I'm strongly in favor of going with Pike because of the experience we have with them, and we don't want to set our paving schedule back by taking any risk with anybody else.
It's a council decision, I can't, I can't recommend Pike spending extra forty thousand dollars, I can pay another street for that money.
Lee?
If I may, I thought, I thought the council and Erica, we all, I thought we came to agreement that we were no longer gonna do bids and do requests for, requests for proposals going forward.
Wherever we can, we do, not every commodity lends itself to that.
Why doesn't this?
Because this is a pretty straightforward, what's your?
Yeah.
But this is a straight costume, I mean, I polled everything I could, even what, I had Pike send me what they had gotten for a multi-year contract out of Scarborough, they're all done as bids, I don't have any that aren't done as bids.
No, but we can still ask for requests for proposals.
You can do whatever you guys want, I have made my recommendation, Paul has made his, I believe you're on the wrong side of the law, but we will go follow through with whatever you all decide.
I wish you wouldn't say that, really.
I'm sorry, my job is to advise you, that is my advice.
Bill, do you think we're on the wrong side of the law?
You have the right to reject any and all bids, and you have the right to consider a variety of factors in making your decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Anybody else wanna speak?
Yes.
We gave a directive, I don't know when, I'm going on, I'm, I'm following Lee's lead here, that we don't, we want requests for proposals for everything. Again, I don't know why this wasn't done that way.
That wasn't a directive, it was my suggestion, so we do requests for proposals for everything.
Why don't we do it?
Well, one do we need to do this favor, is one of the questions.
Well, this summer, Jerry.
What happens if we say no to a low bid, go to Pike, and they can't do it until next year?
I'm not worried about that, to be honest, Jerry, I spoke with them today, they, they'll take their work in heart, they have good capacity, but they're not sitting here waiting for us, they've moved on, obviously, they're bidding other work, like every other contractor does, and there's no hard feelings, the, the bid opening.
Yes.
You win some, you lose some, you move on.
Go ahead, Bill. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion, and on order number twenty-three dash two zero two three, to amend that order by striking out Jamie Ward, DBA Mainly Paving Services LLC, and inserting there in Pike, Pike Industries.
Second.
Discussion?
Don't we have to, as far as in the, in the order, have to give a reason, I know that we have come against this, to me, the reason would, do we have to state a reason why?
It would be preferable.
Okay, and I would, I would add to the motion that we, we, we feel that Pike Industries has the experience, we've dealt with them prior on projects, and not because that the other couldn't do it, I'm trying to, I'm not putting that as wording, but just from past experience with Pike, we feel that their expertise in this particular, for this particular jobs would be warranted, we need that quality control.
Did you get that out?
Go, why don't you repeat that?
Go ahead.
I'll say basically what you said.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I move to amend order number two-three dash two zero two-three, by deleting there from Jamie Ward, DBA Mainly Paving Services LLC, inserting there in Pike Industries, knowing that Pike Industries was not the lowest bid on this project, but the council feels that based on the experience that this town has had, with its pavement in the past, and with Pike particularly in the past, that we are better off to continue our paving project with Pike Industries. You get it?
I will get it.
Paul, skip. Every company involved here realizes this was a three-year deal?
Yes. No, we had all the streets listed for the next, actually, four years, I believe.
Any more discussion?
Just that the bidding process in the future will get another price, right, but we won't bid it out, this is, so if we choose Pike today, then Pike is going to be the company.
For the next three years.
For the next three years.
But we still have the right, I mean, if, God forbid, something goes wrong, that they really screw up this year, we can go somewhere else next year.
But the add-ons are going to be, so even though it's forty-one thousand now, you can be, you can be pretty well sure that it would, it's gonna accumulate to some extent for the upcoming project. What's the total amount of the, of the project? You, we don't know yet, right?
Well, the estimate is, with Pike, seven hundred forty-one thousand.
Yeah, I think Ray was talking to three-year estimate.
Three-year estimate.
Three-year, I, I definitely go back and figure the tonnage of all the other roads.
I know, I get it.
You've gotta remember too, and we've seen this, Paul, if oil, if oil drips, asphalt is based on the old price of oil, so you can, you could, you could inconceivably, for whatever reason, go down next year.
I mean, we saved about, I don't know, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars last year with escalator clause, it did go down a little bit, we saved a little bit of money. It's not a big portion of your asphalt, so I mean, you're not gonna see huge savings, and you shouldn't have such huge increases either, so.
Any more discussion?
One of the things that I'm worried about is, you got a three-year contract, close idea, it's over two million bucks, you pull it away from the low bid, we don't know if they could bring it to court, saying that I'm gonna lose because town in Winslow decides that they'll bid it, but then they'll change their mind anytime they want.
Bill advises us that we don't have to worry about that, that we can deny the bid, which I agree, that we do have a clause in there that says we can deny any bidder, just, I've seen them come back before, maybe it doesn't happen.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I do. Would it be possible to just do this bid and then say we're going to rebid the other two portions of the project, or?
The next two years, I mean, we could do that if just the council wants, I mean, this was trying to give us some stability for, and not have to do this every year.
Okay, okay.
And not always be a question of, well, who's gonna be our contractor, that was the premise designed behind the three-year contract, is to know where we're going.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Okay, so, roll call vote on the amendment to the order, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
No.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
No.
Now we gotta move.
We need to, you need that, like yesterday, right?
Yes, please.
Make a motion, we forego the second reading.
So I can pick?
That's amended first. That's amended, right, the amendment, the motion as amended.
Okay, so the.
The motion as amended.
Motion as amended, okay, sorry about this, you guys haven't done this to me yet. Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
No.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion as amended, passes six to one, and now we wanna waive the second reading.
Motion, to waive the second reading.
Second.
Okay, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
No.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading, passes six to one, and I'll get that written up and how you sign it at the end of the night.
We hold on to the second.
Yes.
Resolution number seven of two thousand twenty-three, providing for the application for a restaurant on-premise liquor license and renewal for Lucky Panda, DBA Lucky Panda Incorporated, doing business as Lucky Panda, three Cushman Road, Unit Two.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
Yes.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Resolution eight dash two thousand twenty-three, providing for council signatures on the attached letter to support the community concepts grant application for the self-help opportunities program or shop.
So move. Second. Yeah, okay, discussion? No discussion?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Want to discussion, uncollected ambulance fees?
The first two were follow-ups.
Sorry I missed the last meeting, I, I know this came up last meeting, since then, I was, decided they wouldn't charge or go after uncollected fees for Winslow, which I agree with, I did have Sheri call down the company that does the collection today, and she asked, I, I had her ask her a question about what percentage of money that's not collected is non-residence of Winslow, and she said it's roughly ten percent, which works out to like fourteen thousand dollars, so, I didn't think that was a large amount, I, so whatever way you wanna direct me, if you want me to try to collect that, or if you just wanna let it sit for a while and decide what you wanna do at a later date, I'm willing to do whatever you wanna do.
These are non-residents, Lynn?
Yes, roughly ninety percent of the bills that don't get collected are residents, but it's only ten percent in a non-residence, which works out to like fourteen thousand dollars, so.
Lee?
I'm in favor of sending it to collections for non-residents. What's the cost asked for that? Is it even worth it at that point?
Well, usually any collection agency gets thirty to fifty percent of what they collect, so if we have, if we don't have a lot of money in it, in non-residence, I think, it's up to the collection agency, really, if they fire off a letter or two and get no response and they decide to quit on it, then so be it.
There are some arrangements you can have where they just charge you a flat fee to send a letter, but there's no real teeth in it, versus a full collection, which yes, that's gonna run a percentage of whatever the collectible balance is.
I don't know legally if we could just have somebody make a phone call, I don't, I haven't looked into that part of the law, I don't know if Bill could advise, but I don't know if we legally can do that or not.
What I would do when, for Erica, is, is ask the people who do our billing if they recommend anybody, and if it's something we can have done, again, just for non-residents,
non-residents.
Residents of Winslow, this is why they pay taxes, but anyway, see what we could come up with that would be relatively painless for us.
Okay, I'll check into that.
Yeah. You all agree?
Yes.
I mean, I feel, even if, even if we have to pay fifty percent to collect, at least we're getting fifty percent of the bill.
Fifty cents we don't have, as we don't want. Right.
We've used a collection agency in our business, and they didn't cost us any money, and they would get a percentage the longer, if it's five years out, they get more of a percentage, so, but we didn't have to pay anything, so I don't think there's a cost.
Okay, I'll check in.
So, I mean, whatever we get, we get.
It doesn't cost you a front, they just take it off.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
You know, talk to the people that do our billing, I'm sure they have, you know, two or three that would be liable to take.
Okay, I'll call tomorrow.
You have PSAP service, Lynn?
Yes, PSAP, tomorrow at one o'clock, I'm gonna try my best to make it down to Augusta, LD eighteen twenty-eight is being brought up, Deputy Chief, for support, so he can turn Waterville into a PSAP area, which I highly recommend, also along those lines, Councilor Trahan, last time, had asked for a breakdown for the different towns, what the towns are paying, which I got a breakdown from Deputy Chief Barney, and I submitted it to Councilor Trahan and Town Manager LaCroy, I don't know if the rest of you got that distributed to you or not, I'm more than happy to give it to the rest of you, it's a real good breakdown about what each town pays now, and what the towns, each town is gonna pay with the new increase. Excuse me, sir?
Lee, it was four dollars and fifty cent per resident?
Yes, so for Winslow, right now we pay one thirty-three, four sixty-five, and we're gonna go to one sixty-three, eight ten, and it has all the other towns, Albion, Belgrade, China, Clinton, Oakland, Rome, Sydney, and Waterville, and what they pay, if anybody else wants those figures, so he, he put quite a bit of work into this, it, the rate, as Councilor Trahan said, works out to four fifty per capita, and they, he used the same rates as a town in southern Kennebec County, Andrew Skoggin area does.
So every town they're gonna cover is four fifty per capita?
Absolutely.
Okay. I didn't know they were doing it by car value.
Yeah, so it's a fair breakdown for everybody.
Okay, perfect.
So if you need me to do any more work on that, I'll let you know, and if anything comes out of the meeting tomorrow, I can update you on that also.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, sir.
Drum and Cemetery. I'm assuming that's you?
Uh, it's actually Paul.
I asked for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I asked for that because since we're picking up all the cemeteries as part of Public Works.
That's right.
The Drummond Cemetery is kind of a gray area. My understanding is in the past, we've done a little bit of work there. We don't really own it. Apparently, they're going broke. There are veterans in it. I just like the council to know, you know, is that something you guys wanna pursue to actually make it ours, so we can take care of it properly? I, I don't like the little handshake deals that were done in the past where, you know, they might've gone three, four times during the summer, officially, unofficially going there. If we're gonna go, I'd rather go on the books. So, something you guys have to decide.
Just one question. I know there was an agreement that we did the fall and spring cleanup, and they took care of the mowing. Are they looking to get away from that?
My understanding, talking to Jason the other day, is they have about three hundred dollars left in their account. And the old gentleman that's doing it is, I think, running out of steam and running out of gas money. So, eventually-
I think you need to be a little more proactive about this than reactive later on.
I mean, it doesn't have to be decided today, just this is something that's gonna be coming up. And, you know, whether the cemetery committee wants to approach the owners and see if that's something they wanna do.
Through the chair, Tom, uh? What's the total acreage of the plot? How many, how many graves are actually there, do you know?
I don't, I'm, I only see it on the way down to the pump station. It's gotta be, could be a couple acres or an acre and a half. There's, could be a hundred grave in there?
Uh, this says three hundred and twenty.
So, I was wrong by the factor of three? Okay.
Well, okay, before we, before we shoot from the hip here, they, they issued a letter here to the town asking for spring and fall cleanup. And, obviously, one is the morning.
And the veterans' graves.
Yeah, so for May through September, each year, we especially hope that spring and fall cleanup is possible for the town to complete annually. But it does look as though the veterans' graves should be part of the town's responsibility to maintain May through September, which the veterans, according to this, are thirty-five of the three hundred and twenty interments.
I mean, before we jump the gun, and again, it's opinion, but I don't, I guess I wouldn't have a problem mowing it, doing the spring and fall cleanup and mowing it before we take ownership of it?
Right. Well, no, I wouldn't wanna take ownership until they request it, but it's-
Right.
I just wanna make sure if we're going there, that we're going there, that everybody's aware of it, and it's not a, I'll sneak in there on the Saturday morning and do some work or something. It's-
If I might through the chair, and maybe you guys know, the cemeteries that are in now that we take care of, do we, are we, do we own the property? Is it the town of Winslow property?
No, because, well, every plot is deeded.
Yeah?
So, technically, we don't own anything. We have to take care of it. We have to take care of the road in and out. But the actual plots are deeded plots. That's a piece of land somebody owns.
So, everybody that is buried there, so either owns it or a family member owns it.
I can't speak to like-
They own the plot itself. The plot is usually two feet by six feet or eight feet. Any value plots?
Bill has a.
The answer is it depends. Because unless what is deeded is from plot to plot to plot with nothing, no space in between, no walkways or whatever, somebody owns that, those walkways besides the people who are buried there.
Yeah, but my understanding is that the town, for example, Alphaxil, the town actually owns that property. The whole thing, everything inside the fence.
That was before deeds.
Well, yeah. Now, and you're right.
The one that told you that?
Yeah, the one that turned over his grave, remember? But the individual plots themselves, that people are actually burying on, is owned by somebody. And who, who knows who those somebody is?
Right.
Well, don't you guys think it would be, it would be who of us to take care of this cemetery?
Absolutely.
Before it goes right to hell and a handful?
That is what we're gonna run into.
Well, their request in here that we, we take care of the veterans' graves, uh, veteran stones, and we'll end with that, is we have the obligation under the law to maintain the stones.
But are they all, are they all, are they all together? Or are they scattered over the three hundred?
No, they're gonna be scattered, they're gonna be scattered everywhere.
So, if you're gonna get those, you're gonna end up getting whole things?
Some stones are gonna be fine, and some stones are gonna take a lot of work.
Let's just, let's just-
Now, when is this letter, the letter you gotta go, when did that come?
That came in today.
Oh, okay, so this is recent?
It might've come in at the end of last week, but it came into my mailbox today.
Okay, so it's recent, then, okay.
And, and what their request in is that we maintain the stones, and they respond from May to September, the veterans' graves, and spring and fall cleanups will be possible for the town to do that. Doesn't say anything in here about the town doing the mowing in between the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup.
Let's make a decision. We still have a lot of stuff on the, to talk about, and we haven't executive checked it.
I personally, I, I just assume we take it right over, if they're willing to do so at this point. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money here. I can't imagine whoever, we're adding one cemetery to the other thirteen.
It doesn't have to be decided tonight, I just wanted, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, because I knew we were going in there, and I wanna make sure that if we're going in there, that the council's aware of it and that we're basically legal to go in there, because technically, we don't normally go on private property, so.
And what you gotta find out, Paul, do they have a plot planned for that cemetery?
I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody, this is just-
Do they know what, what plots are available for people to be buried in? Because right now, the town of Winslow has no place to bury anybody that lives in that. No place at all.
Right.
That we can be comfortably saying that this space is available. Do they have that down there? I mean, I know there's empty spaces down there.
I think their empty spaces are all committed, but-
Or are they?
But I'll find out.
I don't, don't know. If they're not committed, then it's probably, take it over, and that's a place for Winslow residents to be buried.
Again, for now, we're talking about just mowing it, and Paul, we don't have to make the decision tonight, is what you're saying?
That's correct. I mean, I just wanted it as a discussion item to-
Okay, for the June meeting, we'll put it on the agenda, or?
Just wanted you to be aware that, you know, we have been going in there in the last couple of years, kind of a handshake deal, and that makes it comfortable.
I just wanna know, just for specifics, how many plots, whatever information they have, I would like that copy's turned over to the, to you or to the town, so that we can examine it before we, you know, before, I'm all for it, but if we're gonna take it over, then we need to know some of the specifics, who owns the property, how much property the access road, just some basic questions before we start moving in there. And, and, I mean, I'm all, I think if there's veterans' graves there, then, and other graves.
Oh, for what Councilor Mclennan's saying, there's thirty-five graves?
Thirty-five veterans' graves, but a lot of times, theoretically, are we gonna go and mow thirty-five graves?
No.
And leave the others?
Not unless they're all in one little corner. That's what I was getting at.
End of discussion? No move.
Detective, ask just one question. What are we putting on the June agenda? Is it to do just the veterans, or is it to take over the whole?
Take them all the whole, all the same.
And if we take it over, to mow the whole things, and they get extra money and they're kidding, even if it's three hundred dollars, will that come to us?
Do you want me to call you by your nickname?
I don't, I don't, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
Self-determination grant for EMS?
That one is me. So, the surrounding communities, the town managers had a regional meeting recently, and in discussing EMS as a regional thing, as a regional entity, what we would like to do as a group of towns is have a self-determination study done, which there are grants for, so this could go forward without costing us any money. And what that would do, I'm not terribly strong on this, but the self-determination grant, Bill over in Waterville said that he had done one before from when he was down in the southern counties. It, what it does is it determines what the best way forward for EMS in the area is. With all the talk about regionalization, this could be the way that tells us definitely we should stay on our own as we are, or that regionalization is the best way forward. But the grant kinda gets all that study work done for us, so it answers a lot of questions that people may have as we move forward. What we would need, if you all determined that we wanted to do this, is we would need a letter of support from the council. I do, I, I pretty much felt that there would be a lot of differing opinions on that, and it could be a touchy subject, so I had indicated I wanted to bring it up for discussion rather than just putting a resolution before you all. Because I know the sentiment in general in Winslow has been that we do want to be our own entity. The reality of whether we can continue to support that is in question as it is for every surrounding community. So, don't know how you all feel about looking at getting a study done, or if you want me to just tell them that Winslow's out.
My opinion is we have our own ambulance service for our community. And again, this is me, this is my opinion. Waterville's got their own. Delta is still a strong player, who will, by the sounds of things, get beefed back up. This is being pushed, in my opinion, by communities who don't wanna pay Delta and don't wanna belly up to the bar and buy and man an ambulance service. So, I'm not in favor of spending ten cents of Winslow money for such a study, and I would be opposed to spending any money on such a study. Period. We have our own equipment we're gonna use in our town. If any other town needs ambulance service, they should either pay Delta or they should buy equipment and hire people.
Is this a grant, is this gonna cost the town any money? It's a grant, right?
It's a grant that doesn't cost the town any money, and it's not about eliminating Delta at all. It's about determining how, what is here already and what might be built here could best be set up for the future of the entire region, whether that be that the individual community should continue to do their own thing, or whether there are some communities that would be better off to combine. We, you know, it could come out to say that, well, Oakland and Rome and Belgrade should maybe come up with their own system because they're all close together. We don't know what it would, what it would show. It's, but it does encompass also how we fit the existing services, both public and private, into the entire system.
And who's driving the, who's driving the agenda right now for this? Is it?
Waterville, actually.
Waterville is? So, does, will this, when, will this include, like, Delta in the, in the process? All the other people that are going to be, that are going to be in? So, every, every player that's here has a say in this grant, in these people that are running the grants?
That, that's the hope, to have something that's more all-encompassing for, to know, you know, what are the resources that we have? How are those gonna be deployed? Not that any, and I think the reason Waterville's behind it is that they don't want to be the region's provider, they don't think they can handle it. We certainly can't handle it. But all of us do have mutual aid agreements in which we do respond to each other. Delta should get a good sum of money coming through, which will hopefully allow them to re, retool and get back to being on solid footing as well. So.
You guys don't realize something. You participate in this, you're gonna be strong-armed into being part of it.
Well, what I don't understand is why the state EMS system isn't doing this and starting to do-
Waterville is driving this.
I understand that, I fully understand that, but I don't know why the EMS, why we need a grant that what, what the state should be doing with the EMS system.
This is, this is something that I don't believe Winslow should embark in. And a grant, you know, that's like somebody saying it's free money. We pay for grants.
I'm trying to determine what the grant is actually trying to achieve and who's gonna be involved in, in the process. That's the discussion phase of this right now.
Again, if you participate in this, it doesn't matter who pays for it, you are going to be strong-armed into being a player. Let's stick, we've only had this ambulance service going on, what, three years? Let's stick, let's make our ambulance service the best we can make it and start worrying about all these other communities who, for whatever reason, don't wanna play ball with Delta.
I'm not worried about any community. I'm more worried about the viability-
You participate in this, you're gonna be.
I'm more worried about the viability of all the ambulance services, including specifically Delta Ambulants in, in the, in the system, in this, in this, in, in the area. Because I feel that they're very much needed in the area.
I think everyone around the table has agreed that Delta is a key to the viability of the entire region. And I don't, I, I'm not entirely sure I understand how we get drawn into anything that we don't want to do. We still have ultimate local control over what we do with our own service.
Wait and see.
Again, that's why I brought it up for discussion, rather than-
Well, let's, let's do some sort of a hand, show, show of hands, or do we wanna be involved in such a thing?
Well, I would need to have a lot more information before I made a positive. If I was to vote for it, I would have to have a lot more information about what the, what the focus of the, of the, of the study, what self-determination means and what it means for the rest of the system.
I can tell you the focus of their agenda, but I won't say it on camera.
We'll have Erica get us more information. For the next meeting, uh, the discussion module. Sounds good, we can leave it at that, then?
Yeah.
Get more information?
Yes.
Particularly on who the, who the players involved and wanting to be.
Well, Waterville, she answered the question.
Well, it's not just Waterville, but Bill is the one who talked, who's the one who brought up the self-determination grant. And he's got a lot of experience in having done this in Camden, Rockport, that area. They had, and Lincoln, they had a regional system that they had set up there. So, that was just his suggestion as to how we figure out what is the best thing for the area. But I can try and get more information and see if there's anything or not. It's not-
Yeah, okay.
Junior high school decommissioning.
So, I kinda touched on that earlier in my report. We have a situation where the building is not safe at this point. So, we know that we're going to be getting information from Craig Wilson imminently on what we can expect to tear it down. In the meantime, I would like to get your feedback on actually shutting everything down rather than spending any further monies in it. It does mean in the short run, it will have to be boarded up, it will have to be secured. Because if we shut down the power, we have no security system, we have no emergency lighting. It's already been shut down as far as the water service, the elevator, all of that stuff, so.
May?
Lee?
Do we have any idea what it would cost to board it up and shut it down? Shut everything off?
That I don't know, because Fire was the ones who first said that we need to do that right away. I said to hold off till I could have the discussion. My understanding is that normally, Public Works has a hand in that work as far as the actual boarding up. I don't think even when we get to the rest of the decommissioning that you're gonna get away without doing it, because you're gonna have an unsafe- We either continue spending the money on the insurance and the electricity and the fire alarm system, burglar alarm system, or we're boarded up.
How much are we basically spending per month?
We're spending about a thousand dollars a month on the electric bill. We're spending currently five hundred a year on the burglar system, but it's not functioning. We need to dump about another twenty-five hundred in to it to get it fixed so that it actually works.
You would have to, Paul, would you have to board up the second-story windows as well?
Yeah, I imagine we should.
So, what are you thinking, fifteen to twenty thousand to do that?
I guess I'd have to take a walk around the building, so I'm looking at the areas and so was.
You seen the price of plywood?
Yeah, it'd be at least, it'd be at least twenty, probably.
I mean, it's not like there are much of a choice. No. But we could do that.
The unfortunate part is that we have liability if someone gets hurt in it. We've gotta do one thing or the, the other, we do, you know?
But we're still gonna need liability, even if we board it up But we're still going to need liability, even if we board it up, in case some pranks goes in, tears off them.
Yeah, what I gave you for cost didn't include the liability insurance, because we haven't even been, for whatever reason, we've never even gotten the bill on that yet. But we are spending upwards of $1,000 a month, because that building is on the standard offer for electricity, so we're paying 17 cents a kilowatt plus demand fees on that, so.
Could we do this, Erica? Could we ask Paul or one of his associates to walk it, come, you know, kind of give us a ballpark what it's going to?
No, we can get around and see what we have for windows and doors.
Yeah.
I've never really done that. We've just had to determine too, I mean, how accessible, if there's some that are eight feet off the ground, do we board them up anyway, or do we assume we go out and gang roofs?
Well, I mean, if, if people want to break in and carry their own step ladders to the scene, what can you do?
I mean, don't you, this is not just, oh, let's go this afternoon and board up the building. This is like a pretty intense project here, like weeks?
A good week, probably, or a couple of weeks with a small crew.
Yeah, it's not a five-minute job.
I don't have that crew, so.
No, we'd have to sub it out, and that's, and I think I'm low.
I think you're right. Yeah, I don't know.
Even that, finding something to do it, I mean, it's difficult.
Well, we have no choice. We have no choice, right? We can't...
Well, it's one, one or the other. We've got to do something, one, whether it be...
Chisel Wyman and Simpson down on that pipe and we'll tear it down.
It's going to be cheaper to board it up than just fix that roof anyway.
That is true.
I mean, we've got to do one of those two things.
That, that's true. You can't leave the electricity on and leave the roof leak the way it is.
It's probably going to be a year or so before we decide what we're going to do with the building.
We know what we're going to do with the building.
Oh, I know, but it's going to take...
You should electricity savings on paper, we're boarding it up.
Yeah.
You know what's happening to the building?
Oh, I know. I'm talking about...
You sure, Ray? Sorry. Hey, this is a man that doesn't see, the building's no longer there. Sorry, I, I digress sometimes. I apologize.
I say we just figure out what's going to cost to board it up and get it up.
Okay, let's move on.
Good idea. Very good idea.
Marijuana fees.
Can I get one quick question?
Yep.
Paul, if, if we do board it up, is that, is there any maintenance involved with the boarding up process? I mean, if we board it up now, is it going to be still boarded up and secure in a year?
In a year, I'd say yes. If you're going five years, I can't promise that it's not going to start running on us.
Okay.
Marijuana fees.
Hi, Jim.
How you doing?
Good.
Go away.
I've been reviewing surrounding community fees for marijuana dispensary, for dispensaries, and I have found that our marijuana fees are far below the regional average, or state average, really. Extremes do exist in terms of the swing here. Some of them, like ours, is as low as 250, excuse me, $200 after, after your first year. And then in some towns, like Lebanon, which goes high as 40 grand. I am looking to, proposing that we discuss a future meeting, that we look at a 3,500 to $4,000 range for the fees. That would be more in line, and actually a little bit lower than, like Waterville. Waterville's at $5,000 after initial $500 application. Fairfield's at $5,000 after a $175 application fee. Even going out as far as Rumford, they're at $3,000 a year, and they're a far smaller community, or, I'm sorry, they're a far different makeup of a community than we are here.
Jim, can I interrupt one moment, please?
Yes, sir.
Is the 5,000 a yearly fee or a one-time fee?
Yearly.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So, Portland's a $10,000 yearly fee, and, for example, Lebanon, Lebanon starts the application fee out at 40,000, and then it's 20,000 thereafter.
There's quite a difference.
There's...
There's quite a difference for a year.
Some, some communities are using this as a way to, to deter marijuana dispensaries and retail locations in their towns. And I did speak with, I did speak with Bill briefly, it was last week or two weeks ago, keeping this in line with other communities being a little bit lower. What was this phrase that you used for, fees have to be reasonable to the permitting, or...
In relation to enforcing.
Yeah. So, there was a lot more to that conversation that we had, but essentially, the nut and bolts of it is, if your fee is too high and it ever gets challenged in court, there's a possibility that it could turn around on the town and not be a reasonable fee. So, my proposal is to say we're going to go to 3,500 to $4,000, $3,500 to $4,000, and that range will bring us marijuana business revenue still, but we would, we'd still be the top pick for the area, considering we are heavily trafficked, but without the larger fee like they have in other communities. Another community, just for one quick example, Vassabaro, they're at $1,500. Their traffic in Vassabaro is low in comparison to our town. They're just more of a pass-through community. We have a lot more businesses here in the, in the town that would help generate more interest in bringing another business here for marijuana. I believe we have four or five marijuana stores, so if we went to $4,000, I mean, that's, that's quite a bit of revenue coming in. And our town really doesn't have to do much to bring that income in, besides offer them the conditional use permit and the opportunity to open their business here.
What's Oakland, I, Jim?
I looked at Oakland this morning, or, yeah, this morning, and I only saw on their website a moratorium against it.
They may have passed a, there's quite a few towns that have started passing moratoriums on marijuana shops. I don't know that those are going to hold up long-term. There is a move in the legislature to try to force us to all accommodate even the recreational ones, so I don't know how long any moratoriums will stand up, but there are towns that have them right now.
Jim, what'd you say Fairfield was?
Fairfield, $5,000 a year.
And Waterville's $5,000 a year?
Yes.
Okay, now that is for the sale? What about just a grow operation?
I didn't go into those numbers.
Because I think Waterville, Waterville's 500, just to grow it. And I think ours is 200, or maybe even 100, even if we have one?
I was just going by the dispensary itself. I didn't go into the...
Now, is that for medical marijuana or recreational also?
Medical, and most of these towns keep the fees the same for recreational, too.
Have we approved recreational marijuana in this town?
Currently, we are...
I don't think we have.
No, we are currently medical only.
No, medical only.
There's a bill in the State House that if you approve, if you approve medical, you're going, you're going to be forced to approve recreation.
Well, that's, that's...
In truth, it's very easy to get your medical card anyway.
Right.
It's a lot of one-stop shops that you...
So, can we, can we do that tier then, that, just to grow it? I think Waterville's 500. Waterville is 5,000 to sell medical marijuana only.
Yes.
How do you know all this?
I kind of get around and check out what all my neighbors are doing.
So, what are you suggesting, 4,000?
I'm suggesting to be in the 4,000 range, keeps us on the safe side of any legal challenges. If any legal challenges do come, it'll come to communities more like Lebanon or Waterville with a higher...
Put it before us next month?
I think it should, you know, 250 to 4,000, that's quite a jump.
Right.
Maybe we could phase it in over two years, maybe go to 2,000 and then 4,000 after, you know, so that, to me, that would be more of a fair system.
Well, that's why we have so many in Winslow, then. We've got more than four or five, I think, don't we?
We've only got four that are actually licensed, well, the fifth one, I believe, is the one that just moved in.
Yeah, so...
I would just phase in over a period of time the increase, but it's not all at once.
My only, my, now, this is going to be, this is going to be what you guys decide to do as a, as a council, but with that in mind, I actually thought about that, put some thought into, you know, phasing in over time and bringing up our prices over the course of like three years or whatnot. These medical, these marijuana grows, these retail stores, dispensaries, this is a heavily cashed business, and so for them, especially the ones that have been here for several years, they've enjoyed a very modestly low fee. So, they've gone, you know, they've gone three years, they've only spent 700, excuse me, $600 in fees, really, or $650, including their initial application fee, whereas other communities have started off at the 5,000. So, if we were to do something like that, or phasing it in, I think all we're doing is shortchanging ourselves, but again, that'll be a decision at the council. Personally, I believe that we should just go right to the 4,000 and give these, give these, get the opportunity for us to start generating some revenue from this industry that we have not tapped into, especially considering where we are fiscally and where we're going to be going forward with our budgets being tight.
My understanding, anecdotally, from some of the higher-priced communities, is that these businesses are not batting an eye at the higher fees.
No.
They're lucrative. They're generating plenty of business. Actually, I was talking to Steve Gagnon recently, and he has a nephew or somebody who's related to them who was talking about the fees in Lewiston, and their fee was something up around...
It's like 35.
Yes, 35,000, I believe, is what he told me, and he said that nobody's having any trouble paying that, but it's because the industry itself is so lucrative that they're just not batting an eye.
If I may, I was on that committee when we did all that, Ray.
Yeah.
And when they put out the price of 250, I'm like, really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's an hour's worth of work for those guys.
Okay, okay, I don't, I've never been in a shop, so.
Honest, Jim.
I defer to that.
I do not have a medical card.
I would say put it before us next month.
I do not grow my own.
And the other recommendation, as always, I've, I've had this conversation with a couple of council members, as they come in and meet me at the office. Recreation is something else that we haven't tapped into. We're allowing dispensaries, medical dispensaries, let the council just, you know, chew on it a little bit, but we may want to start looking at, considering a recreational store, if we do, maybe one or two, put a more, put a maximum in the town, but it'll definitely be something that we can adjust the fees accordingly for a recreational store. I know the one in Waterville, next to the old Burger King, every time I drive by it, that's a recreational store, and it is packed, jam-packed, every single time you drive by. So, they are definitely making great revenue. These places who are operating correctly are making greater, great revenue and are, as much as there's a connotation against marijuana, they are bringing positive stuff to the town, such as the revenue to fund different programs, so.
Well, let's put on the agenda next meeting to raise the rates of the, of the fees and also discuss having recreational stores.
So, there'll be a discussion item for the recreation, but a order for the 4,000?
Order for both?
And the, the...
Order for both.
We're going to have a public hearing, is that an ordinance?
Yeah, you would need to have a public hearing on that one, because it is a change. Actually, you're going to have to have a, I think you have to have a public hearing on the fees as well, because those are part of the ordinance, are they not?
Nope.
So, we're going to have to have a public hearing regardless, so.
The old Burger King, by the way, somebody just pulled a driver, they're putting another recreational.
Yep, right next to the other one.
Were you going to contact the...
Yeah, they have all parking.
Marijuana stores in town, just to see, just to let them know that there's a public hearing on...
Yeah, I certainly will.
Just asking, I mean, I think they have, they should know, right, if we're going to change an ordinance, so they can have input in it.
And also, Jim, can you check, Jim, can you check out the fees for grow operations only?
I'll fire.
And we may want to do something with that fee.
He's going to try to get the, you know, he go on that, I don't think we want to bring that up.
Could you also look into, at the retail shop, that there's a kind of limit or maximum limit for square footage?
Square footage?
Yeah, because I'd really hate to see a little small 10 by 10, you know, somewhere, just someone build something that's small.
Lee, you've got to understand, every one of these marijuana stores, at least, as far as I know.
I'm just saying, I think it should, should be warranted to look into space requirements size-wise.
Okay, moving on along.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Flowers for the town.
This one should be quit. Bruce Pullen, and I, we have mixed experience with Bruce Pullen, but Bruce has, has offered to have planters built for us for the commercial corridor, and he has a friend who will build the planters and donate them to the town, and he would like to donate the flowers to the town. I wanted to make sure before I accept that, that the council is okay with that. Right now, the beautification committee is pretty much defunct until I can get bylaws written for it and get somebody to take over the helm. So, this could be a good opportunity to get some of this stuff done that we had hoped to be doing through the committee this year.
I don't have any time, but... Where would the planters be located?
These would be primarily along the Bay Street corridor, but also a little bit up Augusta Road, a little bit up China Road.
Hanging or...
No, these would be on-the-ground planters, flower boxes. The Girl Scouts have offered to be the ones to take over watering them if we get the planters in place, so. I know we don't want, the, the big problem that we had with the last beautification committee was their desire to be out on their own and not be directed by the town at all, which obviously I didn't, I objected to, and that led to a bit of a falling out, because I think the town still needs to direct where we do these things, but, yeah.
Okay.
I know. That's why I brought it up for discussion.
I know.
I know.
How big would these planters be?
We're not talking massive ones, because, you know, they're going to be made of wood, so we're probably looking at about a 2 by 2.
Does she still want the town to donate the lumber?
Well, I was just going to ask, I mean, if you guys are willing to build them, planters aren't going to cost them a lot of money to build.
No, and he did not specify that. I can find that out. He said that his friend was just going to donate them, so that sounded to me like nothing. I can clarify on that. What we had originally proposed, that we were going to do this year before things went south, was to approach the businesses along that corridor, ask for a $100 donation, where we would buy the barrels, plant the flowers, and all we were going to ask the businesses for was some help in keeping them watered, and we were going to put a plaque on the side that, you know, this was donated by X business. So, that's how we were going to pay for it. This doesn't involve the businesses as much, which I still like the idea of getting the businesses involved, but we're just running out of time, that's why I'm trying to get some direction.
Be awful careful on how much authority or use you give this guy.
Yeah, I'm not really, I don't want to give the town's authority away to anybody, which is why we needed to redo what we were doing with the beautification committee, because they kind of took off on their own, and even though we had had discussions about where we wanted efforts focused, what we wanted done.
Does he live in Winslow now, or is he in...
I don't think he'd live.
Anywhere?
Ray, did his mother die, or is she in a nursing home?
I don't really think he...
I haven't heard that she has passed at this point.
Out of town. Yeah, because Steve's handling her fairly well.
Yeah, look into it. Yeah, that's fine. When they come motion, we enter an executive session. Second. Pursuant to 1 MRSA subsection 405, 6E, consultation with legal counsel.
Can you hang out for a minute, because...